It's a beautiful place. This is an absolutely wonderful facility. And I appreciate you taking time. You know, I handed these little wristbands and said, "Be part of the solution." Our country has a lot of challenges and things that are facing us. We, as a nation, we're the greatest country on the face of the planet. I have no doubt about that in my mind. But the challenges that are before us are quite, quite large. And I enjoy being with people who want to be part of that solution as opposed to part of the problem. And what I've found in my life is that so few people raise their hands, but those that do make the world of difference. And so I appreciate your participation. You're not necessarily going to agree with me on everything. You may be on a total different political end of the spectrum. What I think is imperative, though, is that we get more and more people involved in every aspect of the system. We need more young people that are involved and engaged in their community and their country. Sort of like what Robert Reich was talking about, how when he said, "We're just one generation away from losing it. We've got to make sure that we preserve the liberties in our constitution and everything that we do." And I know from the very fact that you showed up here on one of the most beautiful nights in Utah, in the middle of the week here, to be here with us tonight, that you see that as well. Because our country is facing challenges. I think, as I find, and talk to people from all across the country, and certainly up and down Utah, that what we face today, the country's worried about. I think we feel like the country's off track. We want to get it back on track. And that's why a number of you probably haven't participated in political things in the past. Maybe you haven't. A lot of you probably haven't. But it takes a community, it takes everybody getting involved to help solve and overcome these challenges. So what I'd like to do tonight is maybe talk about three things that I see are big, major challenges that are facing the United States of America. If they were easy to solve, I'm sure they would have been done a long time ago, okay? But three major, multi-trillion-dollar challenges that face this nation. And then I want to open up questions. It's not an exhaustive list. We could ride all the way across this room here and make out a list of things that we need to work on. But these are three of the most ominous, three of the biggest challenges that I think we face. Now, as we go along here, we're going to talk about trillions with a capital T. To try to get a frame of reference, trillion, it's hard to get your arms around how big that number is. If you were to spend a million dollars a day, a million dollars a day, every day, it would take you almost 3,000 years to get to one trillion. We, right now, as a federal government, our deficit spending is about 1.5 trillion dollars a year, a year. When I first started running, which wasn't that long ago, I ran in the 2008 election, I was worried because we were going to get to nine trillion. Now we're trying to keep the debt sitting under 17 trillion dollars. So you look at the enormity of the problem and challenge that we have before us, it is immense. It is unbelievable. But we're going to try to right that ship. But we have to change the way we're doing business. If we're going to be the world's economic and military superpower into the future, we're there today, but if we're going to continue to be that world's economic and military superpower, we have to change the way we do business. We have no choice. Now, I believe, as I look at the plans here by which I view the world, I believe we need to adhere to the Constitution, and we need to return to those core conservative principles of fiscal discipline, limited government, accountability, and a strong national defense. We get those, if we get those four things right, this country will be on the right track. We will be on the right track. So that's the lens by which I look at it, but I worry about three major things. One is the debt and deficit. By the way, deficit is the annual number by which we spend more than we collect in taxes. Debt is the accumulation of those annual numbers. So when you hear deficit debt, they're a little bit different. The debt is the accumulation of those annual deficit numbers. The second thing I want to talk about is energy. We have no energy plan in this country, and it's a problem to say we'll lose. And the last thing I want to talk about is terrorism. Because terrorism, unfortunately, I think, is here to save, and how we combat it is one of the great challenges that faces this nation. So let me go back to the debt and deficit. We are simply spending more than we take in in taxes. The president would lead you to believe that if we just start taxing billionaires and billionaires and jet owners, we're going to solve this problem. It's this much of a problem. It's this much of a problem. We're not just one good tax increase away from prosperity in the United States of America. We are spending too much money. Now, when I very first ran, I was frustrated with the Republicans. The Republicans had the House and said, "The president's here," and they blew it because they were spending too much money. We were deficit spending about $500 billion a year. And that may be bad. Now we're deficit spending about 1.5 trillion dollars. The president took that number and tripled it. That's unsustainable. It's put us in a place of economic peril that has put our future in the hands of others. One of the challenges that you see out there is, you know, the Chinese. Thank goodness they're buying our debt, but what if they decided they didn't want to buy our debt? When I first went to the Congress, I'd only been there a few weeks, and I went to the Pentagon. I was invited with a small group of freshmen to meet with Secretary Gates and the Joint Chiefs. And we were sitting in this group, there were only like a dozen or so of us, and I'm sitting not further than this gentleman is here. The secretary's speaking, and about 30 minutes in, the secretary, just out of the blue, says, "Do you want to know what keeps me up at night?" Wow, yeah, what keeps the secretary from being up at night? He said, "It's the Chinese with a trillion dollars in treasury notes." Because there's nothing I can do about it. That has been, that is so impactful on me, and so worrisome, that we have put our financial and economic future in the hands of others. We can't do that. I think it's the American way to actually live within our means. And that is the big challenge before our nation. Are we going to actually balance our budget? Or are we going to continue the deficit spend to the point of oblivion? Now, when you have a gross domestic product, a GDP, that is the definition of GDP, every dollar that's spent in this country, think of every transaction, whether you're at the subway, or Hiller Airports, or some, you know, I mean, whatever it might be, think of all the economic activity in this country. Your federal government is spending between 24 and 25 cents of every dollar that's spent in this country. That is totally unsustainable, and just fundamentally wrong. You have to understand, and what I want my colleagues to understand is, there is a proper role of government. And for every transaction, every decision that Congress makes in terms of spending money is a decision to take money out of somebody's wallet and give it to somebody else. And again, I think there's a proper role of government, but I think it's a limited role. And we're nothing. We're overextending ourselves. Now, it's to the point where the debt is so high, remember, interest rates are so low that we're now paying as a nation about $600 billion a day in interest on that debt. Now imagine a country, imagine what life in America would be like if we didn't have that debt. If we didn't have, if we didn't have to pour $600 billion a day, we don't get anything for that, we're just paying interest. Imagine what we could do with that. To put it in perspective, the entire state of Utah, everything we do, everything we do at the state government is between $11 billion to $12 billion. We, as a nation, right now, are deficit spending $4 billion a day. So we had this deal that came up before the United States Congress. I voted no. I voted no. There are several reasons to vote no. Right at the top of that list is the first-year cut. You know, they talk about, "Well, we're going to cut 1.2 trillion." That's over 10 years. You're talking about slowing down the growth of government. Isn't that a cut? Only in Washington, DC is that a cut, right? What we're talking about, the first-year cut, which is really the only thing that a Congress can control, right? Its future Congresses can write their own law and just bypass it. The first-year cut, $7 billion. We deficit spend $4 billion a day. That doesn't even get us through two days. Two days. And yet, there were just a handful of us that voted against this. To me, it was just, it was a deal, it was not a solution. And what we need in this country is a solution. And that's why I wholeheartedly support and believe the answer to this equation is a balanced budget amendment. We have to have a balanced budget amendment. I don't want to break your deck on that if you want me to, but let me get to item number two before I use up too much time. We don't have an energy plan in this country. I blame the Republican administrations, and I blame the Democratic administrations. You would have thought, back in the day, I'm old enough that, remember, when I was a little kid, we were having a crisis in the mid-1970s, and my dad would go to the gas station, turn off the car, wait for the car to fill up their gas, move up one car length, turn off the car, wait for the person to fill up their gas. It would sometimes take an hour to go through and get the fuel that we need for our own vehicle. You would have thought that the political leaders at the time would have understood that we have a crisis. So they created, on April 1st, 1977, they created the Department of Energy. Talk about an agency that has totally and fundamentally failed. We were importing in the neighborhood of 30% of our petroleum back then. We now import more than 50% of our petroleum. What happened? We have spent hundreds of billions of dollars and not solved the problem. In fact, it's worse. When your economy is dramatically affected by what goes on or what doesn't go on in Libya, Nigeria, and Venezuela, that ought to be a flashing red light that something is absolutely wrong with what you're doing. But that's where we are today. Yet we have in our own backyard, right here in Utah, the natural gas and coal and other things that can propel us far to the future. It was funny, I talked to an audience, and I said, "Yeah," I was really passionate, I was really into it, I said, "The challenge for our country is, how do we fuel a vehicle, how do we propel a vehicle from Cipio to San Francisco?" This guy immediately raised his hand, he said, "You know, with all due respect, sir, ain't nobody ever driven from Cipio to San Francisco." All right, boy, well taken, boy, well taken. But that is the challenge. I come from the school of thought that believes we've got to pursue all of the above. Every bit of alternative energy, every bit of this so-called traditional energy. But the government should not be picking winners and losers. And when we do that, we've always created problems, we've always created challenges. So, energy is a multi-trillion-dollar challenge, there are ways to do this, but again, something our country has to comfort, but then you'll see, as I at least, look at the economic model and engine of our country, the very best jobs that we can get here in Utah and across the country are in the energy sector. And yet we have these radical environmentalists at every turn that have figured out how to tie us up in the courts and not be able to extract the very energy that we need for our future, for our jobs, for our kids, for our own safety and security. You know, you come here in Topi, Utah, you've got more people, I mean, your commitment to the national defense infrastructure, the people serving in the military is overwhelming. And it's so good, it's got to be one of the most patriotic places you can go, is hang out around Hill Airport's base, the people that are serving there. And yet we're sending men and women to the Gulf to keep shipping lanes open so we can get that petroleum. And yet in our own backyard, we've got the type of energy that we need, and we're not extracting it. So I could go on and on, but it's truly one of the things that we have to do. The third thing is terrorism. The world has changed, terrorism unfortunately is here, and we're going to have to deal with it. Now, I happen to believe that as we deal with this terrorism, that as we move forward, we are going to have to have a different structure and way to attack this. What drives me crazy is the way that President Obama is dealing with this foreign policy, as it particularly relates to Afghanistan, Libya, and others. I happen to believe that our troops have been so successful over the years that it is now time to bring our troops home from Afghanistan. Why? We've been very successful. We have to come to the realization that terrorism is not confined to the confines of just the Afghanistan border. It's not. We're going to have to deal with the Arabian Peninsula, we're going to have to deal with Yemen and Somalia and other points. We have to have the very best intelligence, human and electronic. When we have actionable intelligence, you take it. You have to kill people. That's what our military does to protect the United States of America. What we cannot stand for is a politically correct war. When you go to war, you go with everything. You go with everything. If you look at the numbers and what has happened, I disagree with General Petraeus, I disagree with our so-called coin strategy in Afghanistan, because what it says is, we're going to try to win the hearts and minds of the people of Afghanistan. Yes, okay, we'd love to do that. But what we can't do is have our military be a nation-building entity. What I believe we should be directed to is counterterrorism. When we're focused on counterterrorism, then we take out the threat. Look at Osama bin Laden. Where was he? He was in Pakistan. When we had actionable intelligence, we took them out. That's exactly what we need our military to do. That's exactly what we need our military to do. And we are the best in the world at doing it. Now, let me talk briefly about Libya. The president was fundamentally and totally wrong, and the Congress was impotent. I am so disappointed in Speaker Meade, I am disappointed in Mitch McConnell, and all the rest of the leadership within the United States Congress. When the president stood before the world, when he was in Brazil, and said, "We have now taken and commenced a military attack upon Libya," he said, you go back and read the transcript, "We got our quote-unquote authorization from the United Nations." That is not where the president gets his authorization. It comes from the United States Army and a bunch of the people of the United States of America. The Congress has fundamentally failed to live up to its duties and obligations to hold the president accountable. If the president has a case to be made to be firing upon Libya, he should come to the United States Congress and make that case. He's never done it. He's never done it, and it's wrong. Absolutely wrong. We have the very best women in the, is serving in our military. But we're going to have to, we are going to have to refocus on that mission and be focused on a counterterrorism type of thing, where we have, again, actionable intelligence, we take it. We absolutely take it. Now, the second part that I want to bring up, and then we'll go right to questions, I've talked too long here. We have to be cautious as a people, as a country, as a nation, that in the name of security, in the name of defense, that we don't give up every personal liberty along the way. That's right. We, we are given oftentimes, I think, a false choice. The choice is, "Well, you've got to give up these liberties in the name of security." No, 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 no. The challenge facing our nation is, how do we become more secure and yet less invasive? And that brings everything from the TSA, where I spent a little time working on this issue, okay? Everything from the TSA, right on to a bill that's in the Judiciary Committee right now that really ought to scare you, because there's a bill out there under the guise of child pornography, where they want to Band-Aid that every internet service provider keep information about you everywhere you go, everywhere you go on the internet for a year, either a year or 18 months. That's not who we are as a people. That's not what we're supposed to do. Of course we want to be with every child pornography, that's the most heinous, sick thing you could ever, ever think of. But that doesn't mean we're going to allow our government to come in and spy and watch on you everywhere you go, every click you make on the internet, so that they can go in a peek and make sure, just make sure you're not knowing somewhere you should be. So that's the balance here. Let me just say, I'm going to mention real quickly about TSA. One of the things I've been outraged about in those whole-body imaging machines, okay? You walk into a whole-body imaging machine, they're taking a picture of you naked. Now, they'll tell you that we don't capture, we don't store, we don't transmit that image. That is not true. I demonstrated that in our committee. You read the RFP, the Request for a Proposal, those machines capture images, they store those images, they transmit those images, that's how those machines are built. Your government is not telling you the truth. They are not telling you the truth, and you ought to be worried about this. They are quoted in USAID saying, "Well, we can tell the number of beads of sweat on your back." See, what you don't understand, what you don't see is, when you go up to the airport, you see this little black and white picture, and it says, "Oh, this is what we're looking at." That's not what they're looking at. They've got this huge, I'm trying to get a, have a sense of, it's a huge oversized screen with the ability to zoom in. I had one person tell me, "I can tell you what year the nickel is in your pocket." And if they can tell that, they can tell every detail of my 10-year-old daughter. That is wrong. It is wrong. Now, okay, what's wrong? What's the solution? Well, guess what? The Pentagon is dealing with improvised explosive devices on a regular basis. In the theater of war, they figured out that they've got to tackle this thing. And so what they've done is, they created this team, it's called JIDA, Joint Improvised Explosive Device Defeat Organization, JIDA. And the general went before some of the media and said, "We have now spent $19 billion trying to figure out how to find these improvised explosive devices. We have come to the conclusion that the single best way to find these devices and these materials is the dog. It is the dog that is the best way to find these devices." But guess what? Those whole-body imaging machines have something that the dogs don't have. They've got lockers. And those machines cost $175,000 apiece, they require software updates, they require three people. A dog is less than $30,000. It's more effective, less invasive, it is the smarter, better way to go. And next week on Fox News, you'll see a story that I encouraged them to do, and that they did and failed, with some of these dogs, they're called vapor-wake dogs. I could go on and on about this. I'm telling you, it is imperative that everybody understand that we just can't let our federal government run amok in the name of security, because there's no end to where they want to go and what they want to do. We've got to be secure, but we also got to be smart, we've got to preserve our liberty. So, I've talked way too long. So, and what I'd love to do is answer any questions that you might have. But we've got a number of people from the postal, postal service, postal service here. Yeah, sir.
I have a two-part question. How to do this? I think everyone's in the mood to agree with me about reducing the budget, the deficit in the budget. And I have an amendment to have a balanced budget. I wrote an email to the White House expressing my opinion, and I got the scariest answer back. Now, the question I have is, what can we do better? Who can we contact? What can we do to be more effective in our opinions to that? The second part of the question is, is there danger in reducing the budget too fast? The government stops spending tomorrow, then I send you on to the case, so what is the immediate plan?
That's a great question. You make a great point. Let me first talk about the balanced budget amendment. Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry. He hit two-part question. One is, how do we push the balanced budget amendment out there? He went to the government, the whitehouse.gov website, pretty pathetic answer in his opinion. And then the other question is, if you cut off federal funding or expenditures too quickly, won't that have an even worse effect on the economy? How do you, how do you put the government on a glide path? And I'll come back and talk about it. I hope that summarizes what you were asking. First of all, in terms of the balanced budget amendment, you know, I tend to end up doing a lot, more than my share of television and radio interviews. And the reason that I do that is, we've got a country of 300-plus million people, there's 535 members in the House and the Senate. I'm doing everything I can to break out and take the message directly to the people. If the people demand it, if the people come in these town hall meetings, and Democrats and Republicans alike continue to ask and demand and bring this up, it has a dramatic effect on the members of Congress. And so I go out there to do as much as I can to break through that clutter out there, make that message be heard, and put people on the spot. Last Sunday, I was on ABC's This Week, and the person I was sitting across from, the Democrat who was there on the show, was the Cars, or was the Cars R., you know, the Gas for Plunkers and all that, he was the Cars R., he was going to come help, you know, restructure GM and all that. And I made a case about the balanced budget amendment, and he finally said, at one point, when he kind of came around, I said, "Well, I'm opposed to the balanced budget amendment." All right, now we're getting somewhere. When the president of the United States stands up, when I was, we talked about cut, cap, and balance, remember, right? I was the lead sponsor of cut, cap, and balance in the House of Representatives. One of the things I want you to know about that is, we introduced that, but we got 90-plus co-sponsors on that bill when it was introduced. So we rallied a lot of people in a fairly short amount of time. And when we put that out there, you had the president immediately say, when he was asked in the press conference, "We don't need a balanced budget amendment, we just need to do our jobs." "Oh, really, Mr. President? You are the president that introduced a budget that went to the United States Senate, a budget that never balances, it doubles and triples the debt." And when it was presented to the United States Senate, it was voted on, it was defeated 97 to nothing. Not even one Democrat voted for the president's budget. It is inflammatory to think that the president is tackling the debt. I mean, seriously, I want to cry at the same time I laugh when the president says, "Oh, we've got to tackle it." He's never had a plan to deal with the debt. Because if you never balance your budget, you can't tackle the debt, you're just adding to the debt. So we, I think, as a people, have to continue every meeting, every time, go there, talk about, "We need a balanced budget, we need a balanced budget, we need a balanced..." And there's got to be new creative ways to try to get that. Cut, cap, and balance was a new creative way to force the issue, and I think we forced it now as we go into this, again, I don't like this plan, this two-part plan, where we're going to have to vote on an up or down basis on a balanced budget amendment. So, a lot more to go there, but we have to have this, I think, because Congress has demonstrated it has nowhere to fall to to actually balance its budgets. The second part of that is, remember, another federal government is spending right now, 42 cents of every dollar that our government spends is barbed. I wish I could just balance the budget, you know, tomorrow. I think if I went around to do a survey, I would guess most of you would say that as well. But the reality is, it's very hard to go cold turkey right away. There are two buckets, I'll oversimplify this, there are two buckets in the federal government. One is mandatory spending, another one is discretionary spending. If you look at mandatory spending, I bet you could come up with five or six things that are mandatory: Social Security, retirement, Medicaid, Medicare, and you start falling off the list pretty quickly, right? There are hundreds of programs that are in the mandatory bucket. Hundreds. And accounts were, and I'm making, it's a very rough generalization, about two-thirds of our budget. Over here is discretionary. That's the thing that Congress actually works on. The problem is, this discretionary bucket is only a third, and that discretionary bucket includes things like the Department of Defense, the FAA. I mean, there are things that you're just not going to be able to get along, we're not just going to suddenly, you know, dismiss flight controllers. There are things out there that have to happen. What we have to do, what we have to do to get, so this usually begs the question, you know, all the Democrats say you need to raise revenue, that means you need to raise taxes. I respectfully disagree. What we said in our Republican budget is that we need to broaden, we're talking about tax code here, broaden the base, lower the rate. I actually agree, we should be getting rid of a lot of these loopholes. I absolutely agree. We can move to a fair tax or a flat tax, I haven't thought to get to that point, because it makes the even, the playing field more even. The best way to draw revenue to the Treasury is that we need more taxpayers, not more taxes. That's right. We need more tax, and there's a huge difference. But to direct us to your question, that challenge is, yeah, if you were dramatically cut it off, that would be very difficult. And I haven't seen any reasonable plan out there to do that. The Republican budget, I'm on Budget Committee, we introduced, puts us on a glide path where we take it from 24, north of 24% of our GDP, down to 19.9% within 10 years, and it gets, historically, we have spent as a nation, our revenues have been 18% of GDP, 30, 40, and 50-year markers. You go and you put yourself on a glide path, you get from here to there. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, actually, there's two questions, ma'am. The other day, Doug Wright was talking to you, and asking some very good, very good questions, and you kept on stumbling, oh, oh, oh. I'm all for younger people coming in, but you've got a lot of the same values as seven year old quarter and a half. And he's got the seniority, he's not going to sit there and drive for his expression class. And why don't you go ahead and work with him to get things done instead of trying to push him on the way? And then second, dealing with terrorism. And I'm 100% the same, that I've got two sons over in Afghanistan right now. One is on his third tour in six years, and about one is actually free Afghanistan, and it'll be his third tour in seven years. Tell them what happened, or I'm near the Shadown shooting. Two of them happened to be in the air right by the Shadown, they got shot down on Saturday. Okay? We don't need to be in Afghanistan, we don't need to be in Iraq. The United States had knowledge of 9/11 before it happened, and it happened, and they are learning about it. Our government is involved in the terrorism part. We need to listen, and what, the government needs to do something about it. And we need, we need to protect our troops and our people instead of protecting our government. Our government is for us. What question are you on?
First of all, thanks for the service of you and your family. I always appreciate people that are willing to step up and sacrifice, put their lives on the line in the most dangerous of situations. So, thank you for that. The last part, I do not believe that our federal government was complicit in the acts of terrorism. I just, I just don't believe that. Your question about Doug Wright, you'd have to go back and listen to the transcript, different people can listen to it different ways. I felt like I was being interrupted a number of times trying to give candid answers to it. Doug was obviously very animated and whipped up on that. That's fine, those things happen. I'm just trying to answer the questions as candidly as I possibly can. He took some shots at me the week before for not being on the show. Well, I'm not going to leave my committee meetings where we're debating bills in order to be on the Doug Wright Show. So, you know, he's entitled to his opinion, and he's got a big following. Against Senator Hatch? I think we can respect and appreciate Senator Hatch for his years of service. He's done a number of good things. But he's also done a number of things that I totally fundamentally disagree with. I totally disagree with. And I tend to think that he's part of the problem, not part of the solution. And I'm not here to enact my candidacy here tonight, but I am seriously thinking about it. So, hang in there with me a little bit, but, yes, sir.
Yeah, at what point do you think you get in there too long?
You know, at what point do you get in there too long?
I can help you with that.
Go ahead, you have a suggestion.
Washington certainly does. Okay, and Washington is the only, the only reason for being a citizen of Cincinnati since Cincinnati at 480 B.C. The other one, New York, is at the park, in Georgia. And I think the Obama administration, the Biden office, they're not senators, they're goose, and they're cowards, and they're...
Yeah, I hope you all can hear that. You know, it was actually Senator Hatch, he said, when he was running against Senator Moss, who'd been there 18 years, he said, "What do you call a senator who's been there 18 years?"
You call them home.
I happen to agree with that, so, yeah. Yes, sir, over here.
I just did a little bit of comparative analysis. When you look at the defense budget and you look at our healthcare, it was just mind-blowing. I got on the CDC website, and this will just make you cringe. 190,000 emergency room visits, children under 21 binge drinking. Thousands of our young kids are dying because of drugs and alcohol in this country. And we want to talk about defense. Have any of you looked in the eyes of Iraqi and seen the love? And just, and their thanks for, hey, we finally have hope? I mean, how can we, how can we gang up on defense when that is the only thing that our Constitution guarantees? 190,000 emergency room visits, children under 21, CDC, government website, check it out. As far as Senator Hatch is concerned, I'm not here to say yay or nay on him. All I'm concerned about is, he knows that disregarding all these other statistics, CDC, Health and Human Services, why don't we look at that? Why don't we hear that on the nightly news? Thousands of our young kids are being prostituted through human trafficking. Why don't we hear about that? And yet, we're hearing about this national defense.
What's your question, sir?
My question is, it's a point that, the very thing, the Constitution guarantees, we're fighting against, and yet we turn our, why?
Thank you for this comment. I really do appreciate people who's come here and believe passionately in something. I haven't heard that statistic, but I appreciate you bringing it up. I subscribe to something, by the way, you can go look at, I think it's a Heritage Action. It was part of the, or an offshoot of the Heritage Foundation. And it really did an analysis of what should our defense budget be? Where are we going to spend those numbers? And I signed on to what something Mitt Romney and Gingrich and others signed on, which is called 4% for Defense. That is, if you look at our gross domestic product, we should be spending about 4% of our GDP. It's been higher than that, but we shouldn't let it get lower than that. And with all the wars and everything that we're involved with, we're just pounding on the equipment that we're using. You go out to the Air National Guard Base there in Salt Lake, and you'll see planes that are, you know, from the 1950s, that they're just trying to keep, you know, patched up together. We're going to have to start making some fundamental decisions. Defense is one of those things that, based on the Constitution, we really should be spending some money on. But is there waste, fraud, abuse in the Defense Department? Absolutely, and we got to ferret that out. But there are a lot of other things that are affecting our kids, and the drug and alcohol and the challenges that our younger generation are facing are huge challenges. I happen to think that those should be addressed at the state level, not at the federal level.
You mentioned lawsuits. And a lot of us are passionate about the fact that that's almost a root of the problem in our country. Is there any way to change the environment to, and term limits were mentioned. It just seems like such in Washington, you know, with early months, Senator, and, you know, with...
Like your optimism.
So, what's it going to take to change the atmosphere of the way the business is developed in our government?
Okay, yeah, you make a great point. What about your question? I'll come back to more detail about term limits. When I first got to the United States Congress, I stood true and tall to what I promised. That is, I was opposed to earmarks. Now, I was, in our delegation of five people, the only person who took that position. They asked Senator Hatch about this. Senator Hatch said, "If you're not asking for earmarks, you're not doing your job." To which I said, "With all due respect, Senator, I came here to change the way we do business, not perpetuate the status quo." Guess what? We don't have any more earmarks in the United States Congress, so...
Oh, right!
We worked better for it. When we went through this latest debt deal, and we were getting to the finish line, and the Speaker was working so hard to get votes in favor of his plan. I remember he just, he came up to me in the cloakroom, and he said to me, he kind of looked at me, he kind of raised his eyebrows, he kind of knew John Boehner, this is kind of what he does, and he said, I said, "Well," I knew he was asking me what I, where I was at on this bill. And I said, "Mr. Speaker, I support you, I don't support your bill." And he said, "Yeah, that's what I thought, I'll leave you alone." And I thought, "Well, this is good." It used to be that they had these candy over here called earmarks. Airports, roads, bridges, all kinds of stuff, they can take, library, this is an earmark? Nice place, yeah, but probably spent a little too much money, but yeah. But that's better because you get focused, we're better for it for not having those types of earmarks. We have a massive amount of wants and desires, smaller group of needs. What we should do is allocate the dollars and then be able to say, "We're going to look at this objectively, not based on political favoritism." That is the better, smarter way to do this. In terms of term limits, I think our founders were quite profound. When they set this, they set up our Constitution, they appointed the Supreme Court, it was our lifetime point. But then you look at what happens in the House, 24 months, and then we've got to revisit the issue. As Senators, six years, revisit. What we have to understand as a nation and as a people, it's okay to flush the toilet and start over, go with somebody else, it's okay. We need to do, that's what our framers envisioned. These were not intended to be lifetime appointments. Now, it used to be that big name, I.D., big dollars equals big victory. I think I've demonstrated personally that we have changed that equation. It's about shoe leather, hard work, policy and principle. It's not about how much money you spend, that that will equal victory. But that is, that requires, that requires people to stand up and take a position and actually get involved in their government. We have a form here with a delegate process where it's much more rally than, say, Arizona or others, where it's based on a, you know, 60-second or 30-second television advertisement and having millions of dollars. If I run for the United States Senate, I know that Orrin Hatch is a big spender, I understand it, I get it. It's a question of who can do more with less. That's the challenge. And that's what I think everybody's going to start to see out here and do their assessment on. Who do they believe can best? There is a myth out there, a myth perpetuated by those with seniority, that seniority means everyone. You know, seniority is the only way to get things done around here. That ain't true. Seniority only matters if you vote right. If you don't vote right, what good is seniority? All things being equal, you want seniority? But that's not how you get things, that's not necessarily get things done. Look at what we were able to do with Cut, Cap, and Balance. Are you missing Senator Bennett or are you liking Mike Lee? So, to fully answer your question about term limits, I actually don't believe in quote-unquote "term limits." I believe in the Constitution, but I believe it's incumbent that everybody stand up and participate. It's okay to get somebody else in office. That's what our, that's what our founders believed in, and that's what I think is right. Where they've had term limits, like in California, it's been disastrous because the staff becomes hyper-powerful. And the second part of that is, you put people in a lame duck position where they're unable to do things that they should probably be able to do otherwise. Yes, sir, right over here.
Article 1, Section 2 of the Constitution gives the federal government certain powers that are enumerated. Of all the powers that serve the states, now, what we're fighting here with this balanced budget amendment push, if Congress won't obey those first 20, what makes us think they're going to obey the amendment? I don't think they will. I don't think that's the right way to do it. I think we should, the Constitution is not broken, doesn't need to be fixed. A balanced budget amendment, I think it's a bad idea because you don't take amendments lightly. I think we need to stick with those first 20 or so provisions that are granted to the Congress and anything else, don't touch it.
You make a great point, I hope you all can hear that, about abiding by these amendments, particularly the 10th amendment.
But convince us that we need a balanced budget amendment if we can't stick by the 20.
Yeah, so his point is, if you can't abide by the 20, what makes you think if you add another one, that you're going to suddenly start abiding by that? And there's going to be a way to get around it somehow and that sort of thing. There's a very interesting letter that Thomas Jefferson wrote. I have to get it, I'm sorry I can't recite it verbatim. But he talks about the one thing he wished that they could have done was to get rid of that portion where they could issue debt. It was, it's very profound, it's very eloquent. I think this is, I mean, Congress's President, we have demonstrated that there is no financial, there is no wherewithal to actually abide by this concept of living within your means. If there are better solutions, suggestions out there, I'm totally open to them. What I like about a balanced budget amendment is that it pushes it to the states and that 3/4 of the states would have to ratify that in order for it to become an amendment. And I think if we push this decision and discussion to the state, they would overwhelmingly support it. But you're right, we can't just willy-nilly be putting a longer list of constitutional amendments out there, so... Yes, ma'am, right here.
What I want to know about the balanced budget, how we should get rid of this, I want to know why Congress, they won't accept rates, why they can't eat that, their salary after they retire, and they make 10, 90, or money when their salary is first place, they get prolonged, they get repeat, how can we stop that? How can they split themselves in the areas and say, "We're not going to take military money this year, we're not going to get social security raise this year, why not, we're going to get ours"?
So, your question is about paying for Congress, getting raises.
Right.
There's a, what I want to help do, and I don't want to be too defensive about this, there are a lot of myths about what happens or doesn't happen to members of Congress. If I served four years in Congress and I ran for an office, I lose, I don't get any health care benefit, I don't get any retirement benefit, I don't get any of that. But, so, what you look at here is, there's a formula. It's the same as other federal employees. Now, I could help make the argument, you could probably make the argument, that the federal compensation and that the federal retirement benefit is too large. But what I also want you to know is, there's not some special program for members of Congress. I have, there has not been a raise since I've been there, there has not been a cola adjustment on other issues. Here's what you do see within the federal government that you guys understand, and I'm not trying to get away from the members of Congress, but my salary is still the same. We are paying too many people too much money in the federal government. I just, if you look at the federal payroll, which includes some of the retirement benefits, we pay, you pay, we all pay, $447 billion in payroll and pension. Now, I have introduced the bill, I have talked about it on television, I've been on Larry Kudlow's show and lots of others saying, "Look, somehow, some way, we're going to have to figure out how to operate this country on just $400 billion." Which is an amazing amount of money, if you think about it. But we ought to be cutting 10%. Now, does that mean each and every federal employee should get a 10% haircut? No, it does not. What it does mean is that we have to be smart enough to go to, say, the Department of Agriculture and say, "Okay, Department of Agriculture, you've had 12 people working on this particular project, now we're going to have to do it with 18." Maybe we even pay a couple of these people a little bit more. But what I'm concerned about, what I don't want to have is, I don't want members of Congress to try to micromanage each individual employee. What I want them to do is be like a CEO, be like what I think Mitt Romney or somebody would be like to be a CEO and say, "You're having a 10% reduction." Now, I've done that in my own office. In my own office, we get what's called a Members Reimbursable Allowance. This is what we get to operate all, everything, from photocopying to airline tickets. We, I have given back, and I'm in the top 10, I don't know which number in that top 10, I was just told I was in the top 10 of the 435 in terms of giving money back to the Treasury. In two years, we returned $640,000 to the Treasury. So, I'm kind of weird by the fact that we've got to do more with less. I don't pay my people as much, I don't do as much frankfiling, I don't do, we're going to have to figure out how to do that. By the way, with federal employees, and I'm going to talk about the postal service, I know what question he's going to ask. Here's the formula, here's the formula. Starting in year five, federal employees get, I better have the piece of paper to get it, but it's very close to this. You take your top three years of salary, take the average of that, multiply it times 1.75%, and then multiply it times the number of years, and that is the annual retirement benefit that kicks in at whatever age it is, 60, whatever. So, you can have early, but that's the rough, general point. Here's what's offensive to a lot of people, and very offensive to me, and I did this with Personnel Director Barry, he's a very nice man, but he came before our committee. More than 60% of federal employees got a bonus last year. That's offensive. What are you in a time with such financial fair, 60-plus percent of federal workers got it? Now, we got a lot of good federal workers. We have IRS facility up here, we've got a lot of posts that are doing their good job. They're patriotic Americans, working hard. But here's what I also find offensive. Since Barack Obama took office until now, there are 150,000-plus additional federal workers. These are people that wake up every day and do what? They regulate things. They regulate in order to justify their existence. We haven't been trimming back, we haven't become more efficient, effective, we've been growing government. I think that's the only thing the President tells us what to do. I got to address these postal folks here, so, we got a number of them.
Thank you, Congressman, I'd like to address, I got 10 volunteers here today. I want to give you the opportunity to defend the postal service, if you have done...
You don't even need to ask the question. I'll tell them what you're...
Wait, wait, I've got different ones, I've got different ones.
He can come over to me and say...
I've got different ones.
Uh-oh.
We've all heard through the media, the post office is doing so bad financially, they're tight. Okay, so, the post office, the postal service's solution is, they want to eliminate the day-of-service. Okay, I want to talk really quick about the cause of that. If we eliminate Saturday...
We got a lot of questions, I'm going to give way too long.
Okay, this is why I'm here for the agency. If we eliminate that Saturday delivery, we'll lose the FDA approval to deliver medication to your front doors.
So, let me, let me, and thank you, and I appreciate the work you've done. This is going to surprise you, it's surprised the heck out of me. I have no idea until I dove into it. Postal service is set up as its sort of own separate entity. It is the only department and agency that I'm aware of in the federal government that has actually been declining by the hundreds of thousands in terms of the number of people employed. And if you look at the financial model of the postal service, they have to charge for what they collect. We don't give appropriations from, your taxpayer dollars don't go as appropriations to the postal service. They charge stamps, and they charge other fees for their services. What a novel idea. We should probably be doing more of that in the federal government. So, they have actually been, I think, moving in the right trajectory, and they've actually done a good job between the unions and management to actually do this through attrition. There's still more to be done, there are a lot of issues relating to the accounting of the retirement, we don't need to go through that. They're dealing with the fact that gasoline, remember, Barack Obama took office, gasoline was like a dollar 84, now it's what, 360, 370? For every penny that the price of fuel goes up, it costs the postal service 9 to 10 million dollars. That's a huge expense, you look at that so through. So, like, I view the postal service...
For the year.
For the year, yeah. So, if you look at, if you look at where they're going, I view the postal service as a commerce tool. And when we're trying to grow business, grow jobs, become more competitive, it is a competitive advantage in the United States to have a fully functional postal service. They add more than 1 million addresses per year to their delivery routes, and yet they've been cutting their expenses and cutting their personnel. Name another agency that has done that, it just doesn't happen. Yes, sir, that can be perfect. Yeah, go ahead.
I've got, I think about energy, which goes to the postal service also.
I, I think about energy, which goes to the postal service also. When I was about nineteen years old, I graduated from a technical school in the Midwest, came out, I took the price of gas and figured what I was amazing at that point would be like being, being a nineteen-year-old, putting out of school, making a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year right now. This whole thing on energy, we have been getting cut up, beat up, and destroyed for forty years, for forty years. And I would like you to take that and put it right in front of the camera to whoever it is, and represent the postal service and every other person in this room. We are getting cut to pieces by the morons that are environmentalists.
Thanks, Senator, he's right, they're environmentalists, they figured out how to price something, of course, that has to change. I can tell you, I've talked to Mike Lee about this before he was elected, he understands this. Rob Bishop, I got to tell you, is a superstar in this category. I know he represents this area, he is as strong and as good on the natural resources issues as ever. We all have special, we all have things we're stronger at, Rob is the best in the delegation by far, he really is pretty good, yes. How can we repeal Dodd-Frank, and? And then the second part is, how much are we spending per day, per week in Libya? I don't know the answer to that question, but it's not zero. And, so, I don't know, it's a good question, I just, I don't know. Dodd-Frank, this is a problem, this is a real problem. We, we, I voted, I'm not part of this. Dodd-Frank was put up there to try to deal with some of the trends, rather than going back and fixing the Securities and Exchange Commission, rather than fixing the SEC and fixing the FTC and all these things, they created a new one, the agency, yeah, that's just what we needed, another agency. An agency, by the way, that has a budget much larger than the FTC, without much definition to it, without much definition to it. That's not what we, we got more regulators, more people, and more confusion. As I go out and talk to various financial institutions, there's mass confusion in the market. When we look at jobs in the economy, one of the fundamental things we need in place to get our economy hunting, we have to have, it has to be predictable. We have so much chaos, we think about the formation of capital and investment, we've got to remember manufacturing is good, and we need more manufacturing in this country. But if you are an investor, if you're somebody who's going to actually take out a loan and invest and build your business, whether it's a little, small business, or you know, a big, great big manufacturing facility, and you don't know what your energy costs are going to be, you don't know what your healthcare costs are going to be, you don't know what your tax scheme's going to be, you don't know, how do you make a reasonable investment? And that's the problem that I think Barack Obama fundamentally and totally doesn't, doesn't agree with. So, this is a major piece of legislation, it is a problem. My gosh, every time I do this, we got more and more people, yes, this government, white guy. Is there any cancer really in Obamacare? The House Republicans, very first vote we took, we repealed Obamacare. Now, the Senate and the presidency are going to take it up, we're going to need a new president, we're going to need a, a new Senate in order to get there, but... Now, the question was, I've got a follow-up, can you defund it? That's probably one of the most realistic ways to attack this. We will, House Republicans in the House passed a budget. Now, we're operating under that budget, there's twelve appropriations bills. When we get to that one that deals with healthcare, then I think you're going to see us work towards doing that. Keep in mind, originally, but the Senate for eight hundred and thirty-two days now has not passed the budget, has not passed the budget. That is so wrong in every way. That's the best way to attack this, but we as House Republicans, the very first bill we did is we actually repealed Obamacare. And they're very back there, standing right back there. Standing up, standing up, oh, sorry.
Which one? There are two of us in the back.
I was pointing at the guy, but go ahead, real quick, stop. Okay, all right, thanks.
My question is, is, we were warned by founding fathers by having a central bank printing our money supply, fractional reserves, the Federal Reserve, even if we balance the budget, we still have to one day accept the fact we have a central bank inflating our dollar. Do you support Ron Paul and Rand Paul's movement, one day abolish the Fed for good, restore that money back to the US public?
Ron Paul, yeah, the question is about essentially abolishing the Federal Reserve, and how do we deal with? What I have sponsored, and what I've joined Ron Paul on, is audit the Fed. I was an original co-sponsor, in fact, I was the thirteenth one to co-sponsor this bill, I co-sponsored it again, Ron's been after it. I, I do appreciate Speaker Boehner for having the guts to appoint Ron Paul as the chairman of the subcommittee that oversees this. I told, I, I told Ron, not so jokingly, he invites me over every Thursday, go have lunch in his office, and a small group of us talk, I don't get over there every Thursday, but he's invited me every Thursday. I've learned a lot from, from Ron. I told Ron, I said, "Ron, we need to go to Fort Knox, let's you and I go see the gold there." Because, he said, "Well, they're not going to let you in." And I said, "Come on, you and I show up, they're not going to let us in, we're going to knock on the door, they're not going to let us in." He said, "No, I don't think they're going to let us in." And I actually sent a letter saying I wanted to go see it, and they sent me a letter back saying, "No, you can't." Just a member of Congress, you know, so, we do need an audit, because there's a big portion there that we have to... Let me get the, yes.
Well, I'd like to begin by congratulating you, the Freedom Index was just published, it comes out every six months, and you're one of the few representatives who scored one hundred percent on the Freedom Index. I would say the vast majority of the laws that cause problems in our lives and get in the way of us just doing our own daily work, minding our own business, aren't technically laws at all. They are regulations, they come out, regulatory agencies, and the members of these agencies are coming up with these things by the means. I mean, just every day we've got more. They have the force of law, but the individuals coming up with these are not directly answerable to us. Is there a way to make sure that every regulation with the force of law has to have congressional approval, so that we can have a little bit of control over this mountain of paperwork, red tape, and regulation that's driving us crazy?
Two things. When the House Republicans got together for the one hundred and twelfth Congress, we did an off-site, kind of planning strategy session. George Will, who's absolutely one of my favorites, came and spoke to the House Republicans. And here's what he said, he said, "The challenge before the one hundred and twelfth Congress," by the way, I don't think we're really living up to it, "But the challenge before the one hundred and twelfth Congress is your relevancy. How relevant are you going to be? Is the Federal Registry, which is where the rules that are published by the administration, is that going to be more relevant than the congressional record?" And I, again, Libya is probably the most atrocious example of the Congress not standing up for itself. So, I totally, now, there's another, what? There's another part to this that I think you will like that's coming up, it's called the REINS Act, R-E-I-N-S. The REINS Act says, if there's any rule that's issued that has an economic impact of a hundred million dollars or more, I'd like to see that number be zero, by the way, but if you, it's a hundred million dollars more, then you have to get the approval of Congress. That would be a great start. Again, I think that should be zero, but it's a step in the right direction, and we will be bringing that up, I'm told, at least this fall. Let me get two more questions, and then we got to wrap up, I, I go bad, we have so many, go ahead, right here, right here. The question is about this commission. You got twelve members, for those of you that aren't following this very closely, in the House, three Republicans, three Democrats, in the Senate, three Republicans, three Democrats. I was opposed to this for a multitude of reasons, one of which is, we've got the majority in the House, why didn't we just give Nancy Pelosi three seats and we got three seats? I don't understand that, I don't like it. But the way constitutionally they think that this has justification is the idea that if they were to pass it, what happens is, if any seven members agree on something, then it, there's a, there's a trigger mechanism that expedites it to go to the floor of the House, to the floor of the Senate for an up or down vote. We've got another meeting and more questions. As I started at the beginning, the United States of America is the greatest country on the face of the planet. I believe wholeheartedly in American exceptionalism, but it requires you all to be involved and engaged. Now, I, I'm about to make a final decision here on what my political future might, might hold. I would sincerely appreciate that you get involved in any way, shape, or form, it's not for me, okay, it's not for me, but I would love your help and support. I need people who can donate time, I need people who can donate money. It does take money. I run a very lean and frugal campaign, but I need help and I need resources in order to do what we're doing. If you like what we're doing and the way that we're doing it, I need your involvement, I need your engagement. I would ask for your support, and I will do everything I can possibly do to live up to the duties, obligations, and make you proud in every way you perform. It's going to be a fascinating year, and into the future, gosh, I cannot thank you, I can't thank the men and women of the armed services. I had a, I had an opportunity to speak to the father today, the Navy SEAL who was killed who lived in Vermont. And with tears, I could tell, I could hear him on the other end of the phone, he just said, "Thank you." And I know that every one of you, if you had the chance and the opportunity, would, would make that call and pour your heart out, and that's what I tried to express, so, thank you for your son's service, thank you for your sacrifice. May God bless you, and may God bless the United States of America. Thank you very much.
If anybody is interested in donating, we've got donation envelopes down here, and you would appreciate any amount. If you're willing to help volunteer for us, please let us know, thank you.